Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Wellington Board of Education meeting. It is Tuesday, July eighth, two thousand and twenty-five. We are calling the meeting to order at seven o'clock P M. We invite you to join us for the pledge allegiance to God.
I have the pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, in the business of liberty and justice for all.
Because we are in summer mode, we don't have our student representatives tonight or P T A, but we look forward to having them back when school gets started again, which everyone is enjoying their summer break. They were certainly kind of humid in there. Okay, agenda item three is the chairperson report. I just have a couple of things. As you know, the third referendum to set our budget is in progress right now as we speak. If you're in the room or online and you haven't voted yet, you have about another hour to get there. They close the week together. We are looking forward to a positive outcome tonight. Regardless, our work is not done. Next, we will discuss how we're going to meet the requirement set forth by the board of finance, particularly the twenty-five thousand dollars that was most. This vote that's happening today. And we will need citizen participation to help us make difficult decisions about what the students must do without. Thank you to our voters and to the citizens who have spoken in favor of our budget. The other thing to talk about is just to touch on the superintendent evaluation because that's an ongoing conversation on our board. That will be on our agenda for the policy committee, which is happening on July twenty-fourth. It's regards to policy twenty-four zero zero. And I'm looking forward to talking more about that and having some feedback from the larger group as well, because I think. We could use some more thoughts on that. So if you're not on the committee, you're able to like tune in. Of course, you're not able to speak at that time, but. Tune in and watch it on the recording. That would be really helpful for when it does come to this paper table. We'd appreciate it for you there. And then I did tell you a bit last week or last month about the Board of Education's evaluation of ourselves. So I gave you all a copy of our district framework because it has our mission statement on it. On our beliefs and our goals at the bottom, and that's what we're trying to succeed as a group, succeed in doing as a group. And then I attached K, which is the Connecticut Association of Boards of Education, had like a model rubric. It's similar to the one that we used for the superintendent evaluation. I just wanted you to have it to take a look at it. I intend to put this again on the agenda for August. But I thought it might be good to give it to you ahead of time, so you can kind of look through it and see if it's something we think we can do this to converse some of you to change things about it. And like I said, we can talk about it a little bit more in August, but it seemed pretty simple and straightforward to me, but of course, I want for your interpretation. Okay, um, next up, we would like to hear from the public. So we're going to move on to private to speak. If you're in person, you can raise your hand or if you're online, you can do so digitally. Thanks for joining us. You'll have another opportunity at the end if you'd like. Thank you. Okay, communications. I did not see any none there either. Okay, everybody's been busy. So agenda item six is the superintendent report. Mr. Stevens, take it away.
Yeah, so the we had the Cape Student Award winners. They we hold those names to announce them at promotion ceremony. So we had two students that were identified to eighth graders, and that was Adrianne Tubbs and Angus Breton. And so they were announced at the ceremony. The award is it's it's a cable award. It's the the principal staff identified the kids. Who the winners were, and it's about leadership, willingness to take on challenges and and showing concerns for others, concern for others. So congratulations to Adriana and Angus. And you remember Angus because he is morning news and was always sharing stuff with us as one of the reps too, which is good. Staffing, we've had some movement. So there's three changes at this time. At Center School, we just received a resignation from Emily Coranian. She resigned her grade one teaching position. She actually took a physical education job. She got her masters in P E, just got it, took her first interview and got the job. And so she's moving from first grade to P E. So wish her luck. We will wait on posting that position. The second one is P related as well. Victor Hurtak, he actually was the point five P E and our athletic director at H M S. He took a full-time job back in North Carolina. So we wish him luck, and I will be honest with you. I'm a little concerned about the athletic director position portion of that because he did a lot. And made a difference with that. And then lastly, Stacy Britner, eighth grade math. She's been she had been in the district for a while. Did algebra as well. She is has taken a high school position in town. So obviously, all the best to all of them. The only other opening that we have right now. Is art at center. We don't have and build that position. That's that point four. We do have a backup plan for that. And then the other positions, the applications are coming in. Math is a shortage area. But the applications are coming in and they're looking okay. So fingers crossed that that was probably the ones that I'm most concerned about. But we're moving in a good direction, which is 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 helpful. So that's the staffing.
Oh, question. So what's the plan for for her talk? Are you looking to? They move to point six up to a full or?
Nope, I'm gonna leave it as is. It's a point five and. I actually before, when I heard he was going, I looked at schedules. And I can't justify going any higher. I think if we were going to do an overhaul of the challenges at the health then, right? So we have one point of who does help and P E. And then the point five is just P E. It's nice to have a person that does help and P E with the cert. If they have, but I can't justify more more time. And honestly, we have. I think point whatever position I was worried, we've gotten a lot of applicants for that position. Which is, it's good. Think people are in, there are certain people in education right now that are looking for part-time positions. And running their own business, doing some other thing in this position, and P E could be something fitness related. But they are doing something else on those other days. What they don't want is a point five that's every single day. And so, and we don't have the schedule book that way. It's really, it is two and a half days that we've done that intentionally. So that the other days, they're not working and they can do other things. If they wanted to solve, they could. But that's just what we're seeing right now.
Is the athletic director part of the point five?
It's not. It's a stipend, and we increased that stipend amount. I have not heard. Obviously, just recently received his resignation. I have to put it out again to the staff to see if anyone's interested. It's so much easier when it's one of your staff members for just because of certification and the requirements. We'll see. I hope that if we bring somebody in that point five that they would also consider it. Things like scheduling, you know, making sure refs are there and transportation. It's it's that stuff. Victor did a lot more because he was engaged really with the coaches and was at events, which is not really an expectation of this position. So she called, we were paying. So. All right, so your student performance review for tonight's. We put in all of the H M S and they're up there. All of the H M S grades, this is quarter four. So again, you have all the standards down the left side. This is the folder you have access to for all the student data. If you look at the last column, it's the, you know, the number of kids that got ones, twos, threes, or fours for each standard, and it basically just goes right through. I have not gone through this with admin. We have admin this Thursday. It's one thing that we're going to talk about. Obviously, Alicia's not on board yet, but Alicia's going to be. It's middle school principal will be joining us for admin on Thursday, which is great. So we'll actually be talking about both center and halls. Just look at the picture across the board. Consistency, are we seeing consistency in grading? And so one of the things I look for is if I see someone has, there's a specific teacher that's getting all fours. Which is supposed to be above grade level, that to me is something we need to look at. And because it should be grade level should be a three. If all the kids are getting fours, great, but that's typically not this bugs back. It's not the case. So those are things we look at. And then we also look at, you know, if there's certain standards where. Just the kids across the board perform poorly. There's a lot of ones or twos. And so again, remember that grade five is standards based, and then when you get to six, seven, eight, it's A, B, C, D, F. The other thing we will look at as an admin team is any student in any quarter or trimester. Who is receiving a score of a one, which is the lowest on on the standards, or an F. In a quarter or trimester. It's really a quarter because it's fall. We're going to have a conversation about that because I want to know. Was there a plan in place? Was it happening? What was the issue with the F? If someone ends with an F, that's significant. And we want to know why. I asked the question. We just talked about what was tried, how often was it changed? Was it attendance related? Were the parents on board? All those things. I just like to confirm those things. And there's a couple I submit, so I I like to look at.
Yeah, there should have been many conversations that way prior to that, for sure.
Agreed. And that's typically the case. They are, but I want to confirm that. And I just, you know, we talk about our intervention process and. I want to know that's it's working there. And so they should, they should be able to back up with documentation, what that looks like. If it's into. Most times it's intervention. But it might not be. It just might not be doing work, but there should be so should be some sort of support plan in place. And what is and was worked. So.
Could you also, I don't remember what the comments situation was on the standards-based report cards for the center students. But because those numbers are so. General seeming to some folks, maybe a narrative, a narrative piece, not maybe, seems really important to me. So.
You mean on their report card?
Yes.
There's a narrative on there.
Like specific scores of specific things should be listed on there. So a parent knows, okay, so I'm getting a vice child has a two.
Yeah.
And adding subtracting within ten, what exactly is the problem? What what are they doing wrong?
Yeah, I will say M K and Lisa. As a principal, I was not as good at this. They receive all of the when the report card grades are due into them on Power School. They read all of the comments and they're not looking for the comment. Jen's a pleasure to have in class. That's what we've tried to get away from. They might not be super specific always. Well, there is an expectation at some point that that information has been documented to a parent. It could be in a progress report. It could be in an email, but that should be happened.
There could also be a separate sheet that a teacher creates and then fills in each quarter trimester and sends home with the. Progress report or separately or whatever, but parents want specific information so they know how to follow up. And some of the one comments I have seen on how school middle school students are those like generic. Things and that doesn't help a parent know where they need to support their kid. So making it more personalized. We have few students, so that shouldn't be hard to do.
And sometimes those are, sorry, sometimes those are more important than the actual score.
Yes. Okay.
Would, can you do me a favor? Can you pull up eighth grade music?
Yes.
Would that be an example of one, oh, you already know I'm talking about that you want to dig into?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, thirty-nine A's and one F.
And nothing in the middle.
And nothing in the middle. And so what you, this is. And I don't want to throw you away into the boss. That's not my intention here. We started having conversations about grading. Specifically, the middle school, Mary Kay was on this because the assessments that were just general, it was not a lot in in the grade book. There was not a lot of clear, you know, like first trimester, this is what should be, should be happening. It was pretty gray. And so they're already on that, and that's one of the things that popped. And we saw the same thing in other. It's not just a music problem. It does span other content areas as well, and it's not always a unified arts class, but that's something that we want to look at. I bet I can tell you what the F has and F is and why, but you know. Are there really all of those A's? And is if that's the case, are we pushing? You know, our expectations far enough. That's that's, you know, we look at those things. But yes, prime.
And there's a lot like you kind of alluded to. There's a lot of reasons why that score could look that way. It's not necessarily that. The student is doing poorly or not turning in assignments. It could be they have other things going on in their lives that are affecting their ability to complete their work. And so. It's important to keep an open mind. You just know, like they say, people always have things going on and you don't always know that from looking at them like, please keep that in mind for our children too, because. That's very true for them as well.
And not that I'm looking for perfect distribution. I'm not, but if you look at like the science right there. That's kind of typical, like that's, you know what I mean? Not everybody's going to get an A.
You're gonna have a curve.
And and you don't necessarily have to have the curve. But what if I, it's where we have a conversation about, and it's not that we wouldn't have a conversation in some of the science grades, you know, who the who the kids with D's and X's. It's the question of when I see every single kid is getting a four, and this is a center school problem as well. It's not just. H M S, we have those questions. We have those conversations and principals are starting to get on that. We've spent more time on curriculum assessments that are related to. I don't want to say academics because they're academics as well, but literacy and math. Scientists kind of let their own charge. Social studies is a little bit further behind, but the other ones are need to come up as well.
Before you go off of this, since my only be me, that's fine, because mine knows a mess. Can you resend this link?
Absolutely. Yeah. I'm gonna reshare the whole folder. I will do that. And then I mean, I can go through center. It's the same conversation. It's the same things I'm looking for, right? All this, you know, every grade levels there. When Brendan did this, and we're going to actually share this with you next year. I shared that we started with reading and math only. Next year, we're going to share everything. She actually pulled all this to the data is from unified arts as well. For center school, but then I didn't have the grades for trimester one, two pulled, so I just said, I'm not going to give them to you. But next year, we have every standard in there now, so that way when she goes, we go to plug in the numbers and they'll they'll be there. You'll see every grade that's on their report card for all content areas.
Because any of that going to need to be adjusted because of C K L A?
Yes, to a degree, but they're doing basically what they're doing, and they started this at. Center is they started changing like chose understanding the conventions and English grammar. That there was an explanation of that. And of what one, two, three, and four was, and it used to be tied to Rears and Rides Workshop. Now it's tied to C K L A. And so I believe those are, I know they were sent out. I don't know if you're on their website, but that they've worked on those.
Okay, yeah, there's some adjustments.
Because that's what makes it come to life, to be honest with you. Where does that great come from? And if you have questions about anything as you look through those, let me know. I'm glad you have those questions. The next item of data, I'm going to be honest with you. This is the, I have not seen numbers like this, and it's a little alarming to me. We have attendance committees and and support teams who who regularly regularly review attendance. I find out when it's when there's attendance that's really significant. We started in twenties and thirties. It's a conversation in admin about what's going on. We have those conversations. This is, this data shows that there's a significant number of students that missed over nine days of school in twenty-four, twenty-five. Some of the absences. Are make sense. They're illness, right? There we know about them. The nurse's call, it's law. There's others that are a combination that are illness, vacation, other family, things that come up. Our support teams that we have in place. They regularly review this. The nurses on it, principals on it, our mental health folks are on it, and they review these things to make sure that they're. They're they're working with parents and kids to get them in school because there is just no supplement. There's no other thing better than getting your kid into school, right? So there's two challenges to this and I things that I can't stand. Bad legislation is one of them. And they changed legislation a couple of years ago to basically say, as a parent, you have the right to keep your kid out of school for the first ninety days for whatever you deem appropriate. You just have to call and notify. And so what happens is John takes his kids to Disneyland for five days, and then John's kids get sick. And suddenly he's at that nine, and we're sending letters like Robert is doing. When you hit ten on, you have, it's no longer excused unless you have a letter from a doctor or something like that. It is a, it's you're handcuffed as a district in this.
Is there a number two that perturbancy that you have a?
There is, but nothing happens. Like you file with D C F now, you do, we do our truancy letters, we we notify. I've not seen any level of support or. Accountability. From the state level outside that that the legislation really supports. It just, it doesn't change anything. The things that change make changes for us are really making sure we're connected with families. And I know that like home visits. When this, when you get someone that's out for twenty days and they want to check to see like, it it might be a student that just doesn't want to come to school and they're fighting your parents on it. And the parents like, please come to my house, help them build a routine to get out of the house in the morning to get to school. We set those things up. It depends on the kid. But let's be honest, I mean, sixty-six kids at center school with nine to nineteen absences, that's a lot of kids. Sixty-two kids at hall is a third. It's a lot.
Yeah.
Aren't there a or is there a minimum amount of days? To graduate or move to the next, since I used to be?
High school has.
Oh, I'm thinking using that with you.
Do you have, do you have?
I don't know the number offhand. I know we have a lot of interventions in place, but I don't know the number on it.
So I think.
I always remember people saying like, oh, you gotta go, my mom be starting.
Yeah.
Go to school or go to the next grade for a minute record.
Right, so like bring those days back.
I don't know.
It is, it is a challenge. And and look, it's not, they're not all, there are a lot of kids that have illnesses. It happens, right? And I think since COVID, every district has seen this, parents keep their kids out more often and extra. And we appreciate that because it doesn't go around, but you can see it's a, it's a big number. And when we talk about our school performance index, which, you know, we talk about accountability. And people have been honed in on aspect scores recently. Our accountability index has a lot of different things on it. There's, there's like twenty points on it. Well, truancy is one of them. Your number of students that have a certain number of absences, you get points taken off for that. This is going to hurt us. It doesn't mean we're not addressing it. It doesn't mean we don't have a plan. But it hurts your S P I score or what it's worth.
So that's a big topic on like statewide radar because.
It is.
They're really trying to get kids to school. Um, so can we have this data, please, every time? And I would also like to see the tardies and early dismissals included. If you can pull that also, because if a student has math last period of the day and they're getting picked up early, four and a five days of the week, they're not going to be doing so hot math. So was that difficult to do?
I don't think so. I don't.
Maybe they're hoping you'll tie into your conversations when you look at the. The ones in the.
And I'm not, I don't want to, I'm not saying no. I think the amount of data that I'm asking people to pull each month to becomes like. This does, that seven or eight lines doesn't just quickly jump out at you like we do a report. We run reports in Power School and you have to double check them. And this to do on a quarter or trimester basis might be easier just to present if. This, if I start adding in tardies, especially at hall, because tardies will pop by class. If it's tardy to school, I can, which there's not a lot of tardies, but. It's just how you have to to pull those out because they all have reported as tardies.
It's great, great sign.
No, it's in, it's in the book. They they recorded in Power School.
Okay. But don't parents have to sign their children in?
Yes.
So we could just count. Ask Rose or Matt.
I can.
I'll write a nicely worded letter.
Why would you have to double check Power School if you are confident of their accurate accurately? Why would you just double check?
Because sometimes the way of Power School. Power School is like this very robust thing that can do a billion things. Depending on how you enter your attendance, which it's done different in center than it does, it's than it is at hall, is the reports are general. So you have to make sure like when you run center schools attendance, that it's taking the full day and it's not just doing a homeroom block. And so when it pulls the data. Sometimes it just, it's, it's just funky. I can't explain it. Literally, we had a conversation at center and hall, the two assistants, to make sure those numbers were accurate. Because they reported different for hall because they were overlapping. It was basically pulling attendance. So it was nine to nineteen was actually pulling anybody who had more than nine absences. That first showed up as seventy-one, seventy-four. Like there's seventy-four students, students that had nine or more, and then twenty to twenty-nine, then it was only a twelve. So that was, it's not a lot to double check them. I just, we want to make sure that what I'm giving you is accurate. But I mean, it just depends on to what level. Like if you want me to report out in the month of, you know, August. September, how many kids are late to school? I can, I can do that. To me, that is not necessarily as powerful as this. When you're out the entire block.
I agree, not as, but I think it's still.
Still useful. So tell me what you're looking for.
And I make one point about that too. Tardy happens by class, at least at home.
Correct.
Familiar with that process. And then they get there.
By center.
I miss first period, that late for second period, which my can you sure? It should count as one, but it.
That's what I'm asking. You're just asking for data of what?
What initial time this will begin?
Are you talking about hall?
Yes.
Seven twenty-five, so when, so if you're showing up at seven fifty every day, you want to know the number of kids that were tardy.
To the school building. Yeah.
By a minute? By a certain?
You could count first period because they are officially, just look at first period.
Yeah, I don't, whatever time they got there.
First period's home room.
This hall starts at what time did you just say?
Seven twenty-five.
And my daughter bus came at seven thirty-five every day. So every day she was late. And you have to.
Right, but is there something to account for?
That's what I was gonna ask. Where's that fixed?
So the home room, there's there's swing time in there. And so that's what I'm asking, like late to school, we. Oh, my gosh, we come off the sidewalk at seven forty. Seven forty, seven four, seven forty.
Yeah.
So that is really where the day is starting because they're doing announcements and they're off to class. That's where you're considered late after that point. Arrival is is basically that period time. Seven fifteen is early because we allow early early arrival. Technically, the first home room, the home room block starts at seven twenty-five, but there's kids that just as buses come in and they're dropped off. It, that's why I'm asking, like, what are you looking for? Is it the first block where they're off? Now home room?
For the academic.
Yeah, for a block.
Say that again.
Their course, right? Their first course of the day, the first period.
Not home room because it sounds like that's kind of fluid, but.
Yeah, there's like an arrival. Period. So that's fine.
Yeah, I mean, centers is easy. It's eight, you know, eight fifty afterwards is is, you know, that's where they're cranking. It's it's hall school. It's a little harder. I can do that though.
Well, maybe if you can discuss it on, or is it to like see what your admin thinks around it.
Honestly, I would, Alicia's not going to know. I would talk to Rose and Matt.
Yeah.
And just find out how it.
What could be?
Because if they're taking it from the book and putting it in, it depending on if they're putting it into the book in that time. It impacts class, it might, it might be fine. I just don't, I haven't looked at that to that level.
Well, like I said, I'm sure when you look at your students who are. Well, like I said, I'm sure when you look at your students who are startling, that's something also besides attendance, you aren't gonna look at the target, so there are dismissals too, so.
Yeah.
Um, that's.
For sure. All of it is discussed at the, when they have a student attendance, student attendance meeting. It's, you know, John's being picked up every day at, you know, twelve o'clock and he, John's missing two core classes from twelve to two, that's discussed. So.
Um, and I'd also be interested in blowing out the nine to nineteen absences a little bit. More granular, it shows sixty-six is a big number, and there's a difference between sixty-six kids being or. Sixty-four kids being absent nine for nineteen days versus sixty-four kids being absent for ten days. Just got over that nine days threshold. Um, I'd be interested in seeing that blown out a little bit, little bit more. Yeah, I agree with Brianna about the. Um, tardies, and I think they're almost more important in hall, not important in center, they're almost more important in hall because. It's switching classes in the different subjects in hall, we had discussed in high school how disruptive coming into class late is for all the other students as well as. Students missing class, so they're trying to cut down on tardies there eh for class as well. Um, and I think the same old true. Sorry, I'd be interested in getting the the tardy data, well, per even by class, or by one X candidate.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Those means my next item. Is not that. Stop sharing here for a second, so uh, school field update, I emailed you about this, but I met with Troy. Um, from Public Works and I met with the vendor. Um, who's doing the hydro seating, Rob Marques from Marques Landscaping in town. Um, we met the Thursday before that major heatwave. And walked the field and I just really sensed his uh concern about putting the hydro seat down. Uh, we were prepped to rent the machine and get out there and do it. Uh, and he said you have multiple ninety-five plus three days doing it. You're taking a big chance if you put down hydro seating, even if you do a good job watering. Um, and so he really recommended holding off, which is what we're gonna do. Uh, we'll do it some point in August, uh, I do have it worked out so that they can, I've already talked to Rachel from Parks, Parks and Rec. Um, that will work out the soccer schedule so they can use um the space down there to practice and play games. I don't think that both teams will practice there, they'll take turns. We are gonna make sure the lower field at hall is accessible, it's big enough to get a practice in, we can get a goal down there. Um, and we can even line a section, so it would be okay, um, but we'll make sure that's, that's the case. Um, the fire department has agreed, Wellington One has agreed to help water. Um, and which is very helpful, so great, great solution. Um, they actually said it's gonna help us with training and just doing hose work. Uh, so I, it's something, once we get closer, I actually might ask the hill as well, just to see if it's, I don't, cause I don't know if they have a tanker. Um, I think Wellington One is the tanker, but I, I will find out. But that was all. Um, and then we had, um. The parent who said, reach out to Yukon, uh, and maybe you said it too, we did reach out to them, we talked to someone. Uh, sent the follow-up email and it's like radio silence. I don't know if it's because they're off, like Yukon's, you know, kinda down and out right now, it might be, we're gonna follow through again once. We come back to this, uh, and get closer to the project in August, because that's when kids will come back and if they can help manage your water or do something. It's worth a shot, um, so I'll keep you posted on that.
Have you communicated with M and J about the transportation?
I have not, but they, um, I'm, I'm waiting. It's just, it's, we, we tend to communicate August first for everything.
Okay.
When do they think the field will be playable?
So our goal is to have softball have their home games there.
In the spring.
Uh-huh.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, it, and. This is such a funny comparison, but someone just had their foundation replaced on three twenty. Uh, their grass was, their hydro seating was done by the same person, and I drive by each time and go, it's been hot and their grass is growing. So, I'm hoping that's the case, and um, again. Public Works is going to do the, we don't have to rent it, they're gonna do all the, the site prep. Um, it is, it is great, it's saving thousands and thousands of dollars. Um, and this individual who's doing the hydro seating has also said, I want this to be successful, I will also help you water, I'm close in town. The hope he can get water off the, of the, the river hydrants or whatever it is down the road, um, it's. It's, it's good, so it's pos, there's a lot of positive coming out.
So it's about ten thousand still, is that?
It's in the same ballpark, I think, yeah, twelve, yeah. Um, the next item, the public works range is what I was showing you the picture there, and you just go back to sharing my screen. So, uh, the public works crew, they repaired the drainage issue we were having on, on the student drop, uh, drop off sidewalk here. This is the east side of center school, the sidewalk here in the red with flood, you can see the dirt that comes down. It's just that, that it would come down the, the sidewalk or the, the. The parking area and just run right down and you just splash through, so they actually put in, there's a drain right here now. And there's a drain right here, they're actually below grade, so the water will run off, we also had an icing problem in the winter time, because the water had nowhere to go. And so that should help significantly, of course, as soon as they did it, we, that, it was the first torrential rain we had, it washed a bunch of grass seed away. And loom, they came out the next day and it was repaired in the morning, like I didn't even have to ask, so. We paid for the materials. They took care of the, the digging and the drainage, there's a, there's a drain that goes out to the, the side now, um, so. I'm hoping this is gonna be fixed now, now our kids aren't gonna have to walk in through the rain, so big, big kudos to Troy and his crew for, for getting out there, I always tell them. I owe the pizza at some point this summer, um, but that's, it's a huge help. The next item, uh, is the marching band, this is an FYI and I'm looking for some guidance here. Um, we had some disappointed citizens, and I don't know if you've heard this or not, or how big of a deal this is or not, but. We had some disappointed citizens because we don't have a, a marching band participating in the Memorial Day parade. Um, I've heard this message, uh, from Pete Tanaka, I've, uh, I've received communications about it. Um, it, it's an issue, and, and the concern is really that, um. We're not being supportive, uh, and this came up at town meeting, an individual stood up and spoke about this at town meeting. So I worked with, um, MK as, as principal, the band director and just said, what can we do? Um, we don't have a marching band, we've never had a marching band, the band that used to march would practice for two times. And then those kids that were around would show up, um, and that's who went. Years ago, when we had scouts, softball, baseball, girl scouts, four H, the parade was huge, it was loaded with kids, that's not the case anymore. Um, families are traveling, so we don't have a marching band and, and, and students aren't available for the event. Our road race numbers for kids are the, it's the same issue, they're just not around. Um, and so the band director got creative, he formed a drum line. They practiced, uh, they, they did a bunch of stuff, I saw a video of it, I thought it was outstanding, um. I think it's still an issue. Uh, and despite communication to this group and, and the concern folks, uh, the feeling is again that we're just not supporting the event. Um, we do hold Veterans Day activities in school, we do a lot for that around Memorial Day, it's a holiday weekend. I don't feel comfortable mandating a student be uh at a school event on a Saturday of a holiday weekend. Um, what do you do when they just don't show up, are you gonna give them a grade on that, it's not a school day, I just. I don't feel comfortable with that, if you want me to do that, that, that you can make that call, um. I'm sharing this with you because I'm looking for some guidance, I thought the drum line was a good compromise. Um, I watched it on video, I thought it was great. But I think there's still, uh, some ill will, some feelings that we're just not doing something, so. I'm glad to do the same thing, if you think that's enough, or if you have other thoughts.
What if it were a volunteer thing, so the band director is already there, because he's there with the trumpet person and the. The, the drums, what if he opened it up to anybody in the band who is interested?
He did.
And they, they also know.
So he sent out the date early on, and then when it got closer and the communication went out to say. Um, we're gonna be doing this, and even though if you sign a contract, it doesn't mean anything, parents don't know what they're doing in Memorial Day. His numbers had dwindled, he didn't have a marching band, he would have had a stray horn, a stray drum, you know, and. It's, that is, to me, is gonna make us look poor. It's, you know. And unless we mandate it, um, which again, I just, I'm not comfortable doing. Um, you can see the participation in town. Wellington Day, the kids races and the, the, um, the parade, the numbers are low. Across the board.
Now EO plays for the Mansfield Parade, I wonder if they would be willing to do two parades, or if that would be asking too much of them?
I, I'm glad to reach out to them.
Too much.
Is it the same days?
If it was morning or afternoon or something.
I, what is it?
They're in the morning, I think. Um, what if?
I, cause I, I was at the parade and I don't, I don't, I apologize, I don't remember, um. Do they have? Like uniforms and?
There was a banner that was carried by students.
Okay.
They, some of them might have had old T-shirts. A few years ago, there were T-shirts for, um, that purpose and for other like physical events that they went to.
That's they have them from the other.
Right.
I mean, this, this sounds kind of cheesy, but I hear, I hear the, I hear what you're saying, it's, it's a, like an almost unwinnable situation. If we were to. Um, maybe professionalize a little bit the drum folks and, and make it kind of like a. Drum corps or something like that.
I think so.
I don't know, like, the Wellington School Drum Corps or something like that.
It's always going to require those kids to make sure they're there. So it worked this year, and this is again, comes back to my same concern, Jen, is that those kids agreed to be there and they committed to it. Some of them did multiple things, so somebody played taps, somebody.
Was there something on the grave itself?
Uh, I don't know that, um, another student did something else and I can't remember, uh, uh, saying this part, so apparently I'm maybe. But if those kids say, yeah, we're gonna do it, we have twelve kids and then six show up. I don't have accountability for that, it's, it's going to be the same issue. I agree, a- and that's how he, he, he ran. We paid it as a club, they practiced after school, like they did, they did the, the work. But it was a small group of kids that committed to it, and if they didn't show, show up, it was gonna be Rob Kennon. Playing the drums, walking down the street as a teacher, because he was the one that was gonna be there. I, I, again, I don't have a good solution, I think maybe inviting EO to come and, and do it would be amazing, I don't know if that's.
Too much for one day.
Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah.
Do you know if they require them to do that at the high school?
They don't require, no, they, but they, but they want to, and that gets to. My suggestion is, I don't think they're gonna be able to solve this anymore, I think this is something that is gonna take a couple of years of. Positive result before you start seeing kids wanna do this, so my suggestion is. You keep marching band going and try to give them some kind of. Better, better is a bad word, press.
No, it's a kind of better reward for their work throughout the year.
Yeah.
Than just our Memorial Day parade, I don't know if it's possible, but. Either like a bigger parade or just even something else that they can do, but something like this takes almost like a ground swell of, of. Consistency where kids like, oh yeah, you know, so and so did this a couple of years ago, so now I, you know, it looks like fun, now I wanna do it, and that's. To me, that's how it's gonna grow, it's not gonna happen any year, it's not gonna happen a year, um. My other suggestion is. As a compromise, what if you have the band do something on Veterans Day? Because you have, I know there's, I know there's veterans that are at the school who have done to them, so. It's not, it's not, it's not a parade, but it is, it would be, you know. Play a Star Spangled Banner, you know, for the veterans, the beginning of whatever.
Yeah.
Whatever knowledge we can do.
So, I think the band played a medley of all the branches.
What about center? So what if as a reward, the whole kids get to move over to center and do centers too? Cause centers is after halls.
Yeah.
Starts like that.
Yeah.
That would be motivating kids, so we send in kids who are just signing up for instruments, to see what it looks like. See the.
Yeah.
Part of it.
I, I don't know if it will be enough to sometimes, like art, if you think about like the play, they do that, that's a weekend, right, they show up, they, they, they practice and practice. Those kids wanna be there, and I think that. I don't know how to build that for the parade, because I'm not sure a lot of families look at the parade and go. We're walking from the town grid down seventy-four, past nothing, really, and I'm not knocking our parade, I'm just saying the reality to. To the cemetery and back up. It's, you know, they, people have talked about trying to do on the same day as Wellington Day, and maybe they build it, I, I don't know the, the. It is about that specific day, that's the feedback that I've received, um, I just don't know how to build it, I. I thought the drum line was awesome. Um, and the drum line at EO Smith is great, like, that's another group that.
Graduation.
Yeah, they're amazing. Uh, and it's a small group, the drum line at EO is not a, a large group. So i- if that's something that maybe I could do EO with our kids. This drum line doesn't, does drum line play the, um, Mansfield Parade, or is it just the marching?
They have the band.
Okay, so there's probably overlap, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, alright.
They could come to a assembly or show for the hall kids. Maybe draw up some interest. They come to the school where I work and the kids grow bananas, and they love it.
Oh, the EO Smith band?
Yes, they're wonderful, it's fun to see alumni.
Yeah. Alright, well, I appreciate the feedback, just trying to. I understand the. The, the desire to have them there, I get it, if, I think if we had. You know, marching band, it would be no question, it's just trying to figure out what that looks like for what we have right now, um. And what commitments our kids and families are willing to make.
Right, it's not, it's the, it's the families.
Sure.
Children in grades pre-k three do not decide.
No.
Determine whether they attend an event like that, you know, they're at the mercy of their drivers.
The jazz band event at the Wellington Pizza, you couldn't even get in the door.
They also didn't have anything else to do, like, we don't have, we don't have baseball right now, dude. They play their national, like, the children.
Baseball.
Yeah.
Right, so some of our band members may be at a different towns parade, because that's where their sports team is, whereas we used to have. Children in their softball uniforms, with their girl scout stash on, playing the flute, like. We were able to do all of it, so that's part two, they might be busy representing a different group.
That's another point too, if the older kids are at EO and they're performing in the EO band and the middle school kids. They have to be with the family, supporting the EO kids in the other parade.
Yeah.
That's all stuff we can't control.
Yeah, I was gonna say that I agree with Jen and Arthur, that it's gonna take a couple of years, and I think that. It might be something beneficial for the town, because I feel like what we're lacking is, is building of a culture, something that's. Future based and like, yes, kids are at the mercy of their parents, but parents are also, I think, very. Encourtable by children who are interested in something and away from video games and away from TV and they're involved in the communities, and I think that. There are parents who would. Move schedules around to adhere to something that their children are interested in, um. I think that it would have to take effort and planning, and maybe, I think. I don't wanna speak for Jen, but maybe what she was trying to say is give them a little pizzazz, to have it be a little more alluring instead of. Five-year-old T-shirts, I don't know exactly what that looks like, if that's a club thing or a budget thing or. What, but I think if you, you know what I mean, I think it's, it's building a. A culture, like Arthur was saying, that I don't think it's gonna happen in a year, but if it's something that. The community wants, and then I think also that might benefit the community in general, doesn't necessarily have to just be. Drum line or marching band or something, but it's. It would be unifying, I think, and I think that'd be something really beneficial for the town as a whole, anyways, to just have the kids and maybe today. Is a good signifier for planting a tree for tomorrow, and maybe I'm taking it to the next step, but I have this grand scheme of. That, I think it, it could be a, a multi-faceted plan that would benefit a lot of people. For that, so.
Maybe it could be an after-school club and also be a little pep band.
It is, no, I think the idea, that's what is already.
Yeah.
I think. I think. Uh, I understand what you're saying. I think, you know, shine it up a little bit and give some opportunity to, to shine. Um, in, in a, we'll, we'll, we'll just say it from a middle school perspective, isn't in a cool manner, is because that's. I think what, why people join stock, right? Um, and that's where I think parents would be willing to do something if this kid is like. I really gotta go, I wanna go to the parade, that's, I just wanna make sure that I don't set myself up for something where we're expecting fourteen kids and. Fourteen show up to those boys, it sound different.
But you know, fourteen's okay. If you have. Right, a couple drummers, couple trumpets.
Who performs at Tree Lake? The just chorus?
Yeah, so what if, yeah, what if you.
Open that up to the inter- inter- intermediate target essentially for the marching band, I know it's cold, be wrong, but. Tree Lake seems to be very popular and it seems like the chorus lanes enjoys performing there. What if you had the marching band do a song there as, you know. Well, look at this, this was a lot of fun. Just like, just like an intermediary. And I'm sure that also seems more, more popular. Tree Lake seems really popular.
Yeah.
And they could even play for the sing-along, I mean, parts of it, certain songs that would, for be Santa's escort.
Send all the praise, drop people. Alright, thanks for the feedback, I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Um, I only had one other item on there and despite this horrible picture. Uh, just wanna share, so I'm working with Troy and Public Works um with his crew in cross-country. This is the lobster claw. Working with the, the cross measured coaches, we're creating a real cross-country course. At um, at Hall. So, uh, we use some funding from end of this twenty-four, twenty-five budget. To buy some posts, this is like a five hundred dollar project with um, a lot of labor. Um, and so there's fencing that's gonna go up and I'm just gonna get a, it's easier. So. We're trying to keep them from crossing the road when they run in three lapses, like two point two miles, which is great. I was like, we're gonna go. So. They're actually tomorrow, from here to here, this edge, they're taking, Public Works is gonna push that all off, they're gonna put millings down and create a path. So the kids will be able to run in there. This is gonna be a brand-new trail, cause this is currently trail here. And if you get this, even though it's upside down, it's a W, alright? Um, from Orlando, run all the way across out here is very steep, so we bought fence posts, the old New England style slats. Um, there's about fifty feet that will go in there, it'll take you out to the corner, back to soccer field, and then we are renting um, a brush hog. To get through here and up, and they'll be able to run inside this, the field, uh, the fence line, straight across the front. And down that hill and down the sidewalk, and the great thing about it is we can put cones out and we can, um, they don't have to, like. Last year, they were just like zigzagging constantly just to be able to get the course in, so uh, I'm excited for it. Um. I was in the woods with Troy yesterday, uh, at about seven thirty in the morning and, uh, walking through the poison ivy, but we're. Uh, it's gonna be good and, and I'm excited for our kids, cause it was one of those things talked about, like, it was exciting for them. Um, this is, I think, gonna be more exciting for them to have an actual course that's not just running on soccer field. Um, and so, uh, I'm walking it with, uh, one of the coaches, I think tomorrow or the next day, I can't remember, we have, at like five o'clock. Um, but again, Troy, crew, myself, we'll have some parent volunteers out there doing some raking, some leaf blowing. Just, and then it's gonna be trampling it, like, to make a path, you gotta get people on it. Um, and so, uh. It's exciting. It does look like a little bit of a lobster claw, but.
Well, part of it being the sidewalks and now, and the um, blacktop from the parking lot.
So they actually, the, the section that's around the school, around the back, the front. And the back, not the top of the, the picture up there, that's on the grass, is on sidewalk and um. Cross-country courses typically, you see a mix of uh, of surfaces. And that's exactly what this is. It's a mix of running the trails, it's a mix of running in, in the, just straight grass, uh, sidewalks. Um, the great spot, that you can actually stand in the, uh, by the claw area. And you can see in and you can see uh, them doing the loop, which is neat, so it can just be a, a cool spot to, to watch and cheer. Um, but we're excited about it. It's, it's, you know, I think it took off more than we expected last year. Um, and so if we can grow it and, and it's physically active for kids to do it, let's, let's go.
And that's a spring sport.
That is a fall sport, so this, this course will be done for, we're hoping to have it ready for fall season. Um, over the next two weeks, uh, we're, we're doing some serious work. So tomorrow is the um, grader. Is basically gonna grade that whole parking lot line. That is a serious bit of business with the millings. And then there's some, uh, Public Works is gonna do some chainsaw work. Uh, and then it's basically leaf blowing, trampling, and we've got the Gravely, um. It's gonna trail brush hog on Friday.
And the, you can get rid of the poison ivy?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, it's always gonna be around there. But, you know, the good thing is, is we'll be able to take care of the trail. The rest of the trails is used quite often, actually, fishermen go back there. Um, and it's not gonna be wide enough for like quads and motorcycles and things like that, so I think that will help. We're trying to keep it simple track. Um, or bikers, you know, but it's, it's exciting, so figured I'd share that with you. It's. Again, positive things for our kids.
I, I, as I just thought of something, can I go back to um, the staffing in center with um, Korean's resignation? So, I know that there's been a lot of shifting because of the. Populations of the grades, and I believe this year coming up, there's gonna be a shift into, cause third, this year is gonna be the result of second, which had. Three. So I think the idea was that third, someone walked to third to have three, because kindergarten only had two. Uh. So. Should you get someone for Korean's position? If that's the route that we go, is that, are you looking for that person to be in third grade or are you looking for that person to be? Back in first, and someone else moved to third, are you looking for that person to be in a different grade? I'm just curious of the. Of the plan, should that position be filled?
There's not a plan. Um, and it's intentional. And it's budgetary related, and it's also class number related. So someone was moving. Uh, there was an individual that was moving to a different grade. Um. This may provide some opportunity for you to make a decision to do higher class sizes in a particular grade. Um, and that would probably be second, if you were going to do that. Why not pitching anything tonight and not posting is I'm waiting for numbers. Um, because this, and you've, you know, this a couple of years ago, kindergarten, is all of a sudden the kindergarten numbers blew up and we had to hire some. Um. People move in the summertime, and I, so, so I'm waiting for numbers to see. Who's moving in, who's moving out, what grade is that happening in, and that's up today that we know, not today, but when I find out, that's up that date. Um, if it looks like it's manageable and it keeps them in that twenty range where others are. Um, I think it's something that will, you should consider. And I will share that with you, I'm just not prepared to do that yet, because I gotta see the numbers first. Um, and, and make sure that I'm not setting this up for a class size of twenty-four. I don't, that's gonna go over.
That's, I just wondered that.
Yeah.
How many kindergartens in the year?
Right now, uh, the last number I think I heard was thirty-two, so two classes of sixteen, and uh, we had banked on. Two classes, twelve, I think. So that's good. Yeah, sometimes it just depends on, like, we had one year where every kid that moved in felt was a first grader. And it just happens that way some years, so.
We've got a bunch of the birds come in this time, so there's gonna be a lot of kindergartners.
So, it's, it's, wow. That's about what voted last time.
Is that a final?
Just about. About eighty-six.
Yep, that's literally what voted last time. It's very close to the number it will vote, what number voted last time.
They really have numbers?
Alright, can I move to the financial report?
Yes.
So your financial report tonight is actually maintenance expenditures. Um, the only, because typically we don't do a July report and we don't have a budget, so. Um, what a great time to do a maintenance thing, and I always know that people talk about, um, you know. It's very easy and stable, they don't take care of the schools, and I want to show that. There's a lot that happens here. Um, before I start this, I did also wanna mention something that was financial and I shared this at the town meeting. I emailed this with you and I wanna make sure people are understanding this. Um, the grants that were withheld by federal government, even though they were approved by Congress. Um, in March, I don't know if we're getting those or not. The, the three things that are impacted, one is ten thousand dollars in grant offsets that's tied to your budget, is an offset in your budget. That is title two and that's professional development. Um, a lot of that is contractual and if we don't get the money, you're still gonna have to pay for PD. Um, the second one was title four, that's being withheld, uh, and that is what we use all of our money to fund our clubs and transportation. Um, and I think we. Not be so um, popular if we didn't run clubs. So that's another ten thousand. Um, I would say it becomes a case of quickly looking at your non-lapsing to make sure that happens. Um, and then the third thing, that's a biggie that is in there, and I'm pretty sure it's tied to it, is the after-school program funding. Um, that is a competitive grant, we applied for it again. It's ninety thousand dollars, but if we don't get ninety thou- if we don't get the grants. We do not have the funding to run the after-school program for what we were charging people. The charge that we would have to, we'd have to increase it significantly. It wouldn't be two four and a day. It would be quadruple that. Um, we have enough funding from the first year that we collected in, with about thirty thousand dollars in that account. That will get us through about a third of the year. So, if we don't get the grants or they totally withhold that money. We will be able to communicate with families, I think, in a fair amount of time to say, hey, we can run the, the, the program through X date. But beyond that, unless there's additional funding in or we significantly raise our prices, um. That's where it's at. So I'm just sharing the information, it's kinda hot off the press, no one's very clear about if the money's gonna come and they're just kinda holding in. To check on it, I, but there were some districts that are losing millions, huge amounts of money. Um, so for us, you know, a hundred and ten thousand dollars, only twenty thousand dollars of that is in um, offsets in our budget. So we'll see. Alright, so the maintenance piece. Brenda and I went through all of the expenditures that were. I'm not talking about maintenance contracts, trash, things like that, elevator, you know, things like that. I'm talking about fixing things, right? Um, and so we pulled together, uh, all of the, the expenditures for twenty-four, twenty-five. Uh, and some of the projects were completed during the year and some we held till the end of the year, just to make sure we had funding. Right, so the upper wing steam traps, that cost sixteen thousand dollars. Um. That was an end-of-year thing, we had held that for a while, uh, and so I moved on. So the things that are in here, things like rekeying locks, when we have a lockdown and you need efficiency to open doors. Uh, we fixed locks and that happened at both buildings. Uh, you can see, and Sam, you could probably jump in here and probably present half of this, because it's a lot of heating and cooling stuff, but. The expansion tank replacement, uh, you know, um, being forty-five years old, they basically said if that went, um, you're gonna have problems when you're heating. Fence repairs at center, um, we still, I did not do the ones for Hall, but we are, we're on that. Um, there's a lot of fencing that just needs to be repaired at center, so that's being done. Uh, I already mentioned the drainage area, we had a, some brick repointing and you can actually see it from the drop-off area. It looks like there's like a zigzag now in the corners. Um, it has to be repainted, but he did some concrete work. Uh, we had boiler repairs from, you know, heat not in classrooms and, you know, problems with pneumatics. Um, which we continued to try and move away from. Um, we had the tree removal. We had a very costly uh, septic pipe backup, um, typically from flush products. Uh, and so when you get old, uh, old pipes that are rusted and they snag, it backs up faster. And so when you start sneaking and jetting and, and throwing cameras down there, it gets expensive. Um, and again, we, I tell you, like, plumbers don't want to go into our stuff and remove toilets or open things up, because they don't know what's gonna happen. This is one of those examples. To fix one part, it was, you know, the, the backup was thirty-three hundred dollars. Um, seems like it happens every couple of years. And then the lights, uh, we noticed, we were looking on camera one night and all of our, our, our lights at Center School. They run along the classrooms in the front and the back that they had burned out, we just had the streetlights. And when they went to uh, inspect, look at them to replace them, it's not just a bulb, it's a full, full human. So they're now LEDs, uh, they were great, it's, no neighbors complain. Um, that wasn't, that was just general money in the budget to do. Um, and it's a security issue, so it's important. Yeah, Sam, before I move.
Question.
I think you have.
Well, two questions, I'll start with an easy one. For the septic tank backup, I'm assuming we have lots of signage and receptables easily available.
Yes, yes, and yes, and not to be, like, I don't know how to be just so clear. When you sit on the toilet, the sign is literally staring at you straight in front of your face.
Aren't they in boys' rooms too, though?
In the building.
They're in the nurse's office.
Little people also liked to use lots and lots and lots of toilet.
We always, when we, when we end up like, I mean, when admirals did the pipes at Hall, I mean, we, there were cell phones down there. We found the hole.
Well, they weren't talking on me.
All sorts of stuff, so.
And then second question is the boiler tripping. They replaced the oil filter? Isn't, shouldn't that be part of their usual PMs when they're doing the yearly maintenance?
They do. We actually may have gotten a bad batch of oil, it actually impacted both buildings. Um, and because we had a similar issue, we talked to them. We could have no other, like, the same issue happened to both buildings. It happened at, at the second boiler. Um, that is, is down because of the same issue. We couldn't come up with nothing. The only similarity was we had just had oil delivered. And we've never had that issue before.
Okay.
So.
Sludge.
Yeah.
Well, sludge, alright, so I'm like, we'll get them back.
Yeah, they do. That's part of it. Uh, we, Stephen Matt beat them up, like, they would, you know, they question bills all the time. Um, and if they send out a rookie. And then the rookie can't fix it, and then they send out the, you know, well, I'm gonna tell you his name is Fred West, when Fred West comes, things get fixed, he's, he's just. He's a magician, he knows it, he's got the experience, he knows our systems. We fight the first bill because since, just send us Fred the first time. And we've now learned that if we can live with it for a couple of days. To wait for Fred, we do. Because Fred, Fred knows, it used to be John and now it's Fred. Um, and so we, we do that.
I'm just gonna make a comment on the hammering sound on the pipes in the classrooms. That is typical with steam and condensate systems, and we might still happen again this year, even though they replaced the trills.
Yeah.
So please do not spend another sixteen thousand bucks without asking me about it first.
It was, so they can't.
I'm sure they, but I'm just saying that that's normal, because it's, it's just the sound, because the condensate's cold, the steam's hot, it's just.
It wasn't the typical.
Right, but if, if it happens again, they're like, oh, it's happening again, let's do more.
Yeah.
It's.
Phil's gonna bring him to the school.
She opened up my ceiling in my office, don't worry, I'm not. Okay.
I just wanted it to say that.
It was not typical. Let me just share that. Like, I'm talking hammer, trying to take us back. On the radiator, like, you walk in the classroom, you go. On the radiator, like, you walk in the classroom, you go, how do you teach with this? And it it's not all classrooms.
Do they, um. Ever, are there coin vent, you know what I'm talking about? Are there coin vents on those radiators?
Uh, I have no idea what you're talking about.
Okay.
Like a bleeder for air?
Yeah. A little pisser?
I don't know. You know, over here, you can, as a board member.
I'll go check it out sometime.
Yeah. I'll.
I'll, I'll leave it there.
The uh hall school side of this, oh, by the way, uh. Four forty nine thousand seven hundred and thirty six dollars at center.
Say again, sorry.
Forty nine thousand seven hundred and thirty six dollars.
At center?
Center school, that, what you're looking at right there is forty nine thousand seven hundred and thirty six.
That's all of our budget, right?
The only thing that wasn't out of your budget was the trees, I think that came out of non-lapsing, yeah, at center.
Okay, but it was, you paid for all of this.
Yes, yes, yes.
So even though on our budget, we technically only have however much earmarked for repairs, we don't really only spend that much.
Correct, yeah. So, in a bad year, I'm coming back to you and saying we need to go to town meeting and ask for money back for all of these things to put it back in our budget. I, i- in a bad health insurance year where there's not extra money there, I will approve things like the lights for a couple of thousand. It just depends on as we chip away, like, I would never approve a a very expensive repair. In the middle of the year, if I was, I had money, I'd come to you and say, let's send this to town meeting. If it was something that the only way we can go to school because we need heat. I'm gonna get it fixed and whatever the cost is, is what you're gonna pay and we can figure that out.
I have another question now that I'm thinking about it in that light, when we have, um. What's the magic number, ten K?
For town meeting?
Do do you use DAS?
You mean like what's on the state bid list?
Yeah.
Sometimes. Depends on if we can get, I don't know, it, no, it's not a number anymore, it's just if your, if your company's on the state bid list.
I didn't know, I know some municipalities have it like, oh, ten K, you have to get three.
Oh, we do, on board policy.
Did you have to do that for the steam traps?
Yeah, and if you can find someone to actually give you bids on things, that will do it, yes.
I don't know if I'm allowed to recommend anybody since I'm on the board.
You can share that with me privately, don't do it on on.
Okay.
Thing, but we, we call vendors and sometimes they don't show up.
Is it private invite? Cause I can't imagine you would.
So sometimes it goes to RFP, there's a certain number I have to do RFP at, I think it's twenty thousand.
Okay.
Um, and there's certain times where it's like two quotes and then three quotes.
Okay. Yeah, and then over when's? When's? I'm having a freaking. What were you starting to say about when you have to have a meeting, town meeting?
Oh, if we're typically ten grand and any money you wanna ask out of the school repair fund that they have set aside, you have to go to town meeting for it.
Okay.
That's why, like, if we were having a bad year this year, we would be taking forty nine thousand dollars worth of projects, center and forty nine, forty six thousand. Forty six thousand two sixty six from hall and we'd be saying, we need a hundred, we'll need a hundred thousand dollars.
Okay.
The, you're gonna see a lot of similarities at hall, it's typically about heating. Um, but you know, we've we've the the school zone sign, not flashing properly, we replaced that and remember it was nine grand. We got down to forty eight hundred because we're installing it ourselves. Um, that's good. Um, the stage electric repairs, things that plug's not working right, being raised, we're fixed, stage refinishing, are you ready for this one? Nope, that's not it.
I don't like it.
Oh, wow. That hadn't been done years. Um, I think it took six coats and it was empty, we pulled down the curtains because there's a lot of dust, but what a difference.
The before picture, I'm gonna try.
Uh, let me tell you, I did not take the before picture, but.
Much darker.
It was much darker and it was like this, it's the color of the, yeah.
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 It wasn't level either, like, some.
No, it's, it's, there were spots for that to like catch your socks.
Yep.
It, so we put, um, we added some outlets for them, the ones that were on the floor were, the boxes were taken out because they were just raised, they wasn't. It was against concrete, they're gone, but he's got outlets on either side now, um, and just this. Stage looks so great now and it's just, what a difference. Um, different product than the floor, the gym floor, remember before and after, we do that annually now, it's like sixteen hundred bucks or whatever. But it's a, it's a huge difference, um, we're taking care of these things, so.
It's not just about a nice looking floor.
No.
Have to say that.
It's safety, it's it's, you know, wanting to be there, it's a lot of things.
That's a huge pride point for our students and our musicians and our lesbians and anybody who spends time in that space, so. It's not just about a wood floor getting finished, I have to say that again.
Yeah, and and I mean, I'll be honest, like Spencer asks for the moon and the stars and the, you know. But he's advocating for his program and I really do appreciate anybody who's advocating for their program. Hard, you know, making it hard to say, you know. Makes it hard to say no, so.
When was that done, was, when was that done?
Right at the end of school.
End of school.
And the, and the school, right, right, schools, you know, both the gym floor and that were done.
Very nice.
So, and they've been great. So you've got, again, you know, build the the, um. The, you got some circulator pump stuff in here, the boiler not operating was, I think, around the same time as that, that oil. Um. AC issues. There's a lot up there. Um, doors are really expensive, real, um, rekeying is really expensive, the four hundred dollars. One of the the flashing pedestrian light, this is some of the racket that people don't understand the price of things and what it costs. O- one side of the flashing lights in the school zone that you, the pedestrian sign, you press the button and walk across the road.
Hmm.
Um, we don't have the capabilities to fix those, you don't get that.
Sounds like a brand new, it feels like.
They are, they were bringing, and guess what, there was a firmware upgrade. For, I'm not kidding, twelve seconds with an iPad. Over, press the button and walked away.
And jump break it.
Yeah, no joke, like, that stuff drives me insane.
We need to get paid to.
Yeah. Steve and I wa- watched him do it and it was, he's like, sorry, that's just the, the cost of the firmware upgrade, so. It's, it's frustrating, um, but yeah, so again, forty six thousand dollars, so. The, we, yes, forty six thousand dollars, we do a lot of, and this is a typical year. It's more because we had money at the end of the year, I did some extra projects, this doesn't include your center school playground, right, these are airing things. Um, so, just thought. It was a bit of an eye opener.
Ninety six thousand and ten dollars. Thank you, I just tried to remember this.
Question.
Yes, ma'am.
How many fan coils did you do, do you remember?
Where where are you looking, what number?
Fan coils at hall school converted. To electronic from pneumatic?
Two.
Um.
If I remember correctly, two, I I all, I don't know if it's, uh, replaced. But I know that we moved two units to electronic off of the pneumatics.
How many do you think there are in the whole school?
I don't know that, we've been taking away at them, the reason we replaced these is because someone at one point I found out rigged up switches. So it was like a light switch, well, they would walk away and had their heat set for ninety for the weekend and the switch would be on or. They were warm, so they'd flip their switch off and they'd walk away for the weekend and their room would, they'd walk in and be forty five.
Right.
There's no more of that, so the switches are gone, so to do that, we went to electronic, but there's a bunch, the faster we get rid of the pneumatics. The better.
Well, yeah, that was gonna be, I was gonna segue into, is there a plan for slow? Conversion?
We have been, um, it's typically when something breaks to a point where it's like, now it makes sense to go to pneumatics. Um, it's also something that, we did it one, a a couple of year, a big project a couple of years ago at center. Um. The compressor is much smaller, I think, now at center because of it. Again, you are gonna renovate a building, that's gonna be one of the things that's gonna go, so trying not to sink e- extra money in. Um, we just fix them as they come up, if it breaks and we're like, we're gonna put money in, let's fix it, right? That's my attitude, no more duct tape, put the electronic back in in there and get off the pneumatics.
Okay.
What other like systems that connect to, because it's always a domino effect, right? But if you change those all, are there other things that have to also be updated or changed alongside it?
Well, the pneumatics is basically your, your powering things with air.
Right.
Instead of a electronic switch.
And they have to be balanced, so we pay someone to come in and balance it, being.
Right, and then it's all flimsy hose, so it could fall off a little nub and it's like.
Yeah.
No, where is it? You don't know, it's in a wall somewhere, you know what I mean, so it's a really old system, it's kind of cool, but. But then if you get electronic, you can get a BMS and that's more efficient, a building management system, I don't know, but.
Yeah.
That's a deeper dive, but I'm sure, I think you have air gamblers, um.
We have building management system that was was. That's part of the Siemens thing. The, yes, yeah. Yeah. So.
Yeah.
Anything left on that too anymore? What do we have left with that contract going on?
It was like seven.
Seven, oh.
But it's us and the town, right?
Yeah.
Cause I wanted to pay ours off early, but. I don't even think we could because. The town has their part too. The contract.
There you go.
Anyway, that's cool, that's good to know. I think that's good information to. Even. Let town people know.
That's why I put it on camera and. Good.
Yeah, good.
Sounds like the kitchen building is the best, the best part. Okay, uh, moving on to identity, new business, we have some minutes to approve. We need motion to send the votes to that, anybody up for it?
I like motion that we need to approve the. Both the regular meeting minutes from June tenth, twenty twenty five and the policy subcommittee meeting minutes from June twenty fifth.
Who got that?
Done it. Okay, any edits or comments? Good as that. Alright, all in favor of putting in minutes, please say on.
Alright.
Yeah, we have just. Very good. Yes, thank you, alright, next, um, we're gonna take an annual visit to our food service lunch and left-in streets, yeah, part here about that.
So we're discontinuing, I told you this, our participation in in C A C E P, which is that community eligibility provision. Um, it's, we're just unable to afford the cost of maintaining our food services program on that C E P. And I'll tell you, uh, I've heard staffers coming off of theirs too, there's several districts that have realized, great concept, can't afford to keep. You're doing, that's it's expensive, um, it was a good way to bring down our balance to feed students, but, um, you can only do that for so long. Um, and so Stephanie Knight, eh, who's our food service director, as you know, and I are suggesting the following prices. For twenty five, twenty six, we're talking about the green as our recommendations. Um, we're looking to leave breakfast prices flat at a dollar ninety, I'll speak more about that in a second. Lunch, uh, because of the paid deck lunch equity tool, we're looking at going from two eighty five to three dollars and you can look at the year. Because that's the last year we read, we found for data where we changed that price, so if you see twenty twenty one and twenty three, twenty four, that's the reason why. Okay, it's not that we screwed up the date, um, we're recommending three dollars for student lunch prices, which is the lowest. That we found in this region, there's others that are higher, no one's lower than three dollars for student lunch. Um, free and reduced will come back though, as part of going away from C E P. So that will change, um, people can apply for that again. Um, and then lastly, the cost of the note would remain the same in sixty five cents, I'm not. The math is there to show you if you wanted to increase, but I'm not, we're not recommending that, um, staff breakfast would remain flat at two fifty. And lunch, uh, for staff, you don't vote on that part, but, um, we're gonna bump it to four fifty. Um, so. The the state has basically said, coming off of C E P, we'll be notifying families. Um, once you set lunch prices and breakfast prices, the first thirty student days of school. Everything remains C E P, so free lunch, free breakfast for all. Um, after those thirty days, it's, it is thirty student days, we're told. Um, then it would go, eh, they do that to give people time to to get onto free and reduced and fill up paperwork, um, and determine eligibility. Um, and so then it would go into the current prices. Um, if you're free, you're qualified for free, you would be free, if you were reduced, you get a reduced rate lunch, that just, we get those reimbursements back. Um. I will tell you, I'm gonna come back to the breakfast price for a second. Um, one of the things that Stephanie has voiced, uh, is that she is really concerned about charging for breakfast, it's been free for many years. Um, is that they're not going to have the usage and she's going to see more kids coming down, can I have an apple, can I have something, and she typically doesn't charge for that. But that can get costly. Um, she is trying to find out. The first year coming off of C E P, uh, and this is kind of where a two-part piece. Is that you're not required to necessarily follow the paid lunch equity tool. We are considering, um, asking the state if we can bump our breakfast price down to a dollar fifty. Um, we're trying to determine if the lunch, eh, the paid lunch equity tool applies to breakfast as well. Because we want more kids to eat breakfast. Um. The second part of that is the lunch equity tool for the lunch where it says three dollars going from two eighty five to three. The reason why we're asking to do that is because if you leave it at the two eighty five. And then the following year, you have to do the paid lunch equity tool, you might have to raise your lunch prices a lot. Which would be a bigger hit to families at one shot, so. We went to three, knowing that we still might have to because of the paid lunch equity tool, raise again next year. But we're at least in in the ballpark, um, and not have to raise a quarter a day.
Can you, oh, sorry, can you explain to me what the lunch lunch equity tool is?
They have this crazy tool that basically says how much, uh, you have to raise your lunch prices by a certain amount. And they do it based on your, what you're getting for reimbursement, they look at a bunch of different things, um. You can have a healthy balance in your food services account and it doesn't matter, we fault them on this. Typically, we've done the bare minimum, every year I've had to do this as superintendent, we've done the bare minimum to meet the requirement for what we had to do. If you don't do it, you lose some of the reimbursement, you don't wanna do that.
I was just gonna ask that.
Um, but it's a convoluted thing that they come up with that sometimes you look at it and go. I have a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in my account, why can I not do this?
Exactly, those are different, okay, thank you. Slate's not doing free breakfast anymore, you can lift this.
Not that we have, we've not been notified of any free breakfast. Yeah, Stephanie and I talked about it, cause I think it was free since twenty twenty.
Right.
I'll start you.
And I thought it, I thought it was, I thought at least that part of it was continued, but.
There was discussion about it, I don't know that it went through because the, coming off the C E P. We were told the first thirty days and we have not seen any other communication about free breakfast since, I know we've discussed them. Sam, say it.
Um, are there any families in our town who have like? A, a debt of, you know, or?
No.
Know what I'm trying to ask, I don't know how you say it.
So currently because of the way it's been operating for a while, there's nobody that owes money, um, every now and then we'll get a donation. The challenge typically is a family who just makes enough money to not qualify for any support. Um. We had a family that was in that situation for the after school program, who was paying full price, who owed both owed money. Uh, and I just made a decision that it was, uh, I got a request in, is there any way I can do a payment plan or do a special request? We had thirty thousand dollars, I reduced their fee by a quarter and they're paid up. They were, I'm meeting the criteria, and you do that based upon need, and they had demonstrated need, they could, they could show. Um. If anyone, um. If anyone, um, and this happened, I think EO on, uh. All car items, you have to have cash. Um, if some, some districts will allow them kids to charge things all the car and not having any money, next thing you know, parents like. Why am I a hundred and fifty dollars in debt, what is this? Um, we don't allow that, our food services don't allow that, they get a lunch. But they won't, they can't, if they don't have money on their account, they can't charge in the negative.
They get a little, how does it work?
So parents put money into it. But if they go in the negative, we still give them a lunch, it's a number.
Like a pin?
Yep.
Okay.
And then we just notify them. Um, again, we work with families, if there's any debt at the end of the school year, the Board of Education is responsible for covering that, that is law.
Two questions. Can we cover the processing fee for parents? So they're not having to pay two fifty every time they ask on it. Yeah, we, we actually talked about this the last time before it went into C E P is that some of the problem with, um. The parents is they can't afford to throw a bulk of money onto that account and every time you put ten dollars on it, you get a processing fee in that process. You start adding up.
It's like two fifty or something like that.
I mean, they can do a cash or they can do a check, i- if you want the charge, that's the, eh, there's a processing.
Okay, so they can send their child in with a check and that would avoid the fee.
And yes, excellent, for cash and they put it on immediately, they don't wait for the check to cash. So I see a check from John for twenty-five dollars, twenty-five dollars put on your account.
The other question is, you said we don't have to follow their guidelines for the first year potentially.
We're trying to confirm that, for sure.
Okay.
But we believe. Um, we are really feeling like the jump is going to be significant in the second year if you don't go up to three dollars.
I was more worried about breakfast. I was thinking.
We don't think C E P, we don't, sorry, not C E P, we don't think the paid lunch equity tool applies to breakfast. Which again. That would make sense because the state comes up with wacky stuff.
Well, if that's true, could we just do a free breakfast and eat the cost?
We could, but we wanna make sure we have enough money.
Right, mathematically, that'd be.
That's per purpose of doing the dollar fifty.
Okay.
Of, basically, you're making twenty cents per breakfast versus, you know, more. They're, again, they're self-sustaining, so they have to bring enough money to keep their program going. Um. I. I think I told Arthur, is it the transfer stations weekend? Um. We do what we can with what we have. Stephanie, I, um. I get emails for, um, like the government auctions. And Wyndham had a government auction, lo- obviously locally. Um, for equipment that was from a school that had been renovated and they got all new stuff or closed. They had a stove. That was a ten thousand dollar stove that she got for twelve hundred dollars. She asked if she could do it, she talked to the director, does it work, yes. All the burners, everything's operational, it's great, you can still buy the same stove today at the store. We got it for twelve hundred dollars, so they're picking it up on Thursday, like, when I say frugal. Yeah, uh, she's like, she's like, can I, can I bid on this, I'm like, I sent it to you for a reason. Do you need any of the, this equipment? I was watching a bus. I'm not kidding, I was like, should I call the board? Um, but that's what I watch those auctions for. It, it's not something we can call someone reliable and get information about, I would never do it. But this is a food service director that she's worked with and, you know, I was saying, they're actually being nice and transporting here for us. Like, eh, eh, just, that's the collaboration, those are things that people just don't see. Uh. But again. I may come back to you, if you vote on the dollar ninety and the three dollars and the sixty-five cents for all the prices. Um, I may come back to you in August and say, I have new information, we can lower, well, um, the, the breakfast price to a dollar fifty. Here's the map of what we think, because we can look at the number of breakfasts we have. Quote-unquote sold the last year as free. We keep track of that, we can see how much money we think it would cost us. And then what would we bring in? Um, just to see what it would be worth.
Should we vote on this in August, so then it's only one vote, or do you want us to do something tonight?
I think you should vote on it tonight, so that way she has the information and if you change the. She wants to get a letter out sooner than later. Um, and your August meeting might, we wanna get the C E P letter out, here's the lunch prices, here's how you can put money on your child's account. Um, first thirty days are free, like all that information. Um, it's kind of like us saying the after-school program, we're gonna be sending something out saying, this is the point.
So how much are reduced lunches?
I don't know that, good question.
That will depend, you'll.
Yeah, I don't remember if it's, I think it's a set number they give us.
Okay, a number from the state.
Might, it's like a dollar forty or something, I can't remember what the number is.
Okay, and then parents pay that. Hey, they, that's what the parents would.
Correct, that's, they get the, yes. They pay a reduced rate.
So you need a motion for this, right?
If you wanna move on this, those three things, yes.
I'm. That we approve the food services pricing. Uh, breakfast, one dollar ninety cents, lunch price of three dollars, and the price in sixty-five cents. Okay.
Um, any questions?
My brain's fried, I was working outside.
Okay. Any last comments, questions, sounds?
I wish it was cheaper.
Oh, I know. Well, also, like. Our kids are never gonna go hungry and I trust that was, uh, for sure, I know that's important to her, um, so we'll figure it out.
They're trying to make more scratch meals, like they're trying to do.
Healthy eating and farm-to-table, like they're doing a lot of wonderful work there, so, yeah, we're lucky to have them. All right, all in favor of approving and accepting these pricing for the next school year, please say aye.
Aye.
Great, that's in the next pass, everybody's seconds, okay. Um, next we're gonna look at some policy stuff, it's a first look for the whole group. Um, fifty-one fourteen is restoring past, since we've signed fifty-one sixteen is Connecticut's school climate and challenging behavior of only. Fifty-one seventeen is student discipline suspension and expulsion. And, did you send us, anybody?
Yes. So, I thought I did.
You didn't, totally.
I shared the folder.
Yes.
Yeah, so I, I can give a snapshot of each of these.
Please.
Um, this is the restorative practice, eh, response, so basically what the policy committee is doing is taking bullying. Um, the discipline policy and this restorative practice. Adopting the ones from, uh, shipment which are model. And adding an additional one, which they're working on. Which is a discipline policy, which is, uh, not as serious as expulsion and, um, suspension. So this first, and they would go in order. It would basically be five-one-one-four restorative, five-one-one-five, five-one-one-six and five-one-one-seven. Right, so this restorative one is a short model policy from shipment and good one, it aligns with all the other policies on the agenda today. Um, it's, it gives you some definitions of what things look like. They're all aligned, which is what you want. Um, it's pretty straightforward. You would go, you, you would just simply approve this one. The second one, the five-one-one-six is the school climate policy. And this is a policy that you're required to adopt. All right, so this policy updates Connecticut's bullying law, you have to do that. Um, and the law required cave to develop, um, update and approve a school climate policy. And, and it had to have been approved by the Social Emotional Learning and School Climate Advisory Collaborative, which has been done. Um, they also, and Arthur and Brian, I found this out, um, in Gen, I think you're Gen two. They also had to, um, create the bullying complaint form, that's why I found out they didn't do have one. The ca- cave hat was responsible for creating the form. Um. What's not clear to me yet, and I'm still waiting for the answer on this, it's been gray, is do we, are we allowed to modify that form or do we have to adopt as it is? Um, my feeling so far is ad- adopted as it is. Um. So once it's approved, that form that cave had will go on our website, it'll go on our handbooks. Um, and, and really the policy, it redefines, uh, bullying, eh, and there's some newly de- defined terms in there about challenging behavior. You have to have this approved for twenty-five, twenty-six, this came out in twenty-three. They just approved it in March. So like, eh, eh, the information just was approved and finally pushed out. Um, so. Basically what will happen is the school cl- climate policy, this one here. Um, this will replace your bullying policy. Your current bullying policy, which is five-one-three-one, point nine-one-one, that will be taken out, this one will go in. Five, your, which you don't have tonight, your five-one-one-five is the policy that the subcommittees, the, the policy committee is working on. Um, and it's gonna have a name, something like minor disciplinary issues, procedures and expectations. So it kind of goes from restorative practices to minors to suspension or to bullying to suspension and expulsion. It'll kind of go in that order, if that makes sense, all right? And the five-one-one-seven policy. This is basically the model policy from shipment again. This will replace your suspension expulsion and stu- and student due process policy. Um, and yes, again, there is a number change, so that was five-one-one-four, this will become five-one-one-seven. Um, it'll just go in order. Uh, and this'll be the beginnings. My suggestion is you take this as it is, the only change is on page nine. We have to update the bullying. They left on the old bullying because until you adopt it, you have to follow the old bullying policy. So as long as you're gonna do this, I'm gonna take the definition from the climate policy. And put it into this one, and then we're, we're up to date. So it's only a first read, and as Arthur said last time, this one in particular is a big policy, it is long. It is legal. Um, I'm making the suggestion to take it as it is, minus those little changes. The bigger piece of work, um, and I, you know, the parent that has been, uh, speaking about discipline in your presence of speed. Um, we're taking that feedback and really, that's what's gonna go into five-one-one-five. The processing procedures around the, um. Kind of the day-to-day referrals, the minors, um, what it looks like, like for teachers, that's where we're gonna make it come to life. Um, and so that's what the, we have the work to do, to do on that, still in, in the form. Um. But that's coming, that's where the next policy meeting, that's what, one of the things that, that they're looking at. Questions on any of these? Policies?
No, I just don't, I just wanna reiterate what you're saying, don't wanna. Get lost or, or make a thing that we've not listened to what was being said and make a change there, it just doesn't happen. Necessarily in these policies, but like you said, it happens in the, in the five-one-one-five that we're working on, but that will and stuff that will be, it will be addressed. It will be addressed with a better system going forward, uh, so.
Yeah. And that policy will also impact student handbooks. Which would, it'll be just, you know, we can just put it right in the student handbooks and, and opposite staff handbooks. It just makes the process clearer. Any other, so you'll have a, a second read on this at your August meeting. And I will tell you, you have to approve your climate policy. At your August meeting, so if you have questions about it, you gotta let me know in advance, so that way we're in compliance and a set. Which also means if you're gonna adopt the climate policy, you probably ought to do the restorative as well, because it goes along with it. And the, the dis- the big discipline policy. Because if I, if you adopt the climate, I can update the discipline, I will actually make the changes for you before then. So you can see that section I had in yellow with the actual definition in there. Does that make sense?
All right. Okay, um, next up is agenda item nine, which is old business regarding legislative. So for that, um, throughout the budget process, there has been public discussion about things like per pupil expenditures, including questioning the need for three full-time administrators. The most efficient way, and some may argue the only way, to drastically change the operating cost is to consolidate our two schools. Coupling this concept with recent changes in legislation about state reimbursement for school projects, which is bill seventy-two eighty. It seems as though the time has come for our board to get serious about the future of our buildings, including the associated costs of upkeep and repairs. While it does not feel like an applicable time to address this topic. There are timeline requirements and deadlines that we need to be aware of should we choose to benefit from government support. At our last meeting, we started talking about having Representative Nuccio address the town and come talk about some of these new things with us. Um, and we also ta- started to talk a little bit about having Rusty from QA and then get involved again, so, um. We're gonna spend a little bit of time tonight figuring out where we wanna go from here and what we should do, so what information did you have to share?
So I have an update, so I met with Rusty. Um, QA and I'm to, to discuss the, the new reimbursement rate. He shared a few items, um, first. Uh, he, I, I asked if he would be okay for updating prices for a, a small retainer, he said, that's fine. Uh, he said, whatever you think is reasonable. Um, so I set that up. Um, he's updating the pricing, the information gathering in the presentation. Um, he's updating the prices with the adjusted reimbursement rate. Uh, he's also looking into the additional fifteen percent reimbursement that I mentioned last time, that was tied to preschool spaces. And the fifteen percent reimbursement for special education. Um, I know Matt Clark said he talked to, to, um, Tammy. Tammy's, I love Tammy, she's done great work, but she's not O S C G R. She does not accept the grants, I will tell you that Rusty does believe that, um, there are towns that are applying for those additional pieces. And that we would fall to that. He's checking on that to confirm it, but that would be great for us. Uh, here's my suggestion at this point. Um. I think you need to have a special board meeting. With Rusty, the first week of August. Before your August board meeting, just to talk about this. Updated pricing, what questions can we ask Rusty, get all the information? You would use your then August board meeting, if there's anything else you have questions, he would not necessarily be there, I don't think, but if you wanna have any other dialogue about it, you could. Following that. I would recommend you then have a, your joint meeting that you discussed and do your joint meeting in September. That's where you're gonna invite Nuccio, and the reason why I say September is because it's hard enough to get people to come out to anything now in summertime. This is too important to miss out on that, and as soon as things kick back in some September, I think you'd have a better chance of getting people in. Um. When you go into September. I'm really gonna suggest that you have already made some sort of, come up with some sort of direction. If you go into your. That joint meeting, which we could do this, we could do this, we could do this, we could do this, we could do this. Um. I think it's gonna muddy the waters. Um, and other people have said the same thing to me. So, my suggestion is, once you get the information from Rusty to look at it. And be prepared to make some sort of. Direction statement, I will say. Such as. Um, we believe this should be geared towards one pre-K through eighth grade school. And it could be either a renovation addition at all school. Or a new pre-K eight on a new site. You might wanna do something different, I'm just giving you an example of the two things, in my opinion, from all my experience, that. Those are the two things that you could consider. I think talking, thing about talking about C I P. Is gonna muddy the water, I think about, you know, coming up with some of those six options is gonna muddy the water. If you can have a specific conversation about. One or two options at that meeting, it becomes focused. Everybody's on the same page, and then you make a recommendation from there to. The Selective Deformative, uh, uh, School Building Committee. And then you get your F P S, um, that's kind of where I'm at, talking to Rusty. Um, he's willing to do the work for us to get the information. Beyond that, if you're gonna do a school building committee, you would, and you're gonna bring somebody up board, you'd have, they'd have to be responsible for themselves or. You know.
So would, would Rusty give us, um, numbers of the options?
Yes, but just like you had the last numbers that he pulled together. Um. He will do the same. Um. And one thing that Rusty shared, that I will share with you that I'm a little concerned about, that no one else has talked about. Um, and I haven't seen what the change is. He talked about July one of twenty-six, something changing with legislation. That greatly impacts items that are reimbursable. That greatly impacts items that are reimbursable. And basically, the way I took it from him was, if you don't act before that date, which you, you think eighteen months or two years to make it to eighty percent was hard. This might impact it more.
So if you don't have a commitment from the state.
Your application, not commitment.
Okay.
So he's, I, I asked him to pull that information together and what that would look like, if, whatever it was, whatever information he had, I have not seen it yet. He went on vacation, I'm on vacation, but, um. If that increases drastically after July one twenty-six, I think we wanna know that. Um, if, and again, I'm, I'm sharing my thoughts, uh, you know, I'm blocked. If a school building committee is formed and the first thing they do is they need to look at land, if they cannot find land. Then you quickly move to the other project. That's if you're going to do a pre-K eight building. But you know from the last time of what the HVAC project cost, how crazy that amount was. Um, you know how expensive it was to renovate both buildings. Um, that, the only way to do is, is to get one pre-K through eighth grade building to do this. All or new?
And we are not going to get, we're not gonna benefit from the legislation as much if we renovate it.
You will, you will, cause it's renovated to new, you will.
So we would get.
You'd still have to do space standards, you still have to do, you know, waivers. Um, yes, you would, you would.
We would get the same.
The, he believes yes, yes. If you, if that, if you present a project, school building committee, you have a vote and fails. You're at the point where then you're looking at, we're gonna do project by project and we're just gonna start picking things off.
We're gonna do this.
On a bigger scale, I mean, you get both groups done, you start, but it's, it's, you just have to start picking on projects. So that's, again, quick recap. First week of August, board meeting only, Rusty, presentation. Second week of August, regular board meeting, that would be, uh, additional discussion. Early September, invite Timmy and joint board conversation with a targeted project. September board meeting, make a recommendation to call the school building committee for a purpose.
I think that sounds like a great timeline.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Cause most of that work is not gonna come out of this board, it's gonna come out of the school building committee, you're just making the recommendation and. Quite frankly, you've done a lot of the work already, and you're just waiting on updated numbers. And I don't think it's gonna be a surprise to you.
Okay, so you'll let us know when that special meeting is scheduled.
I'm gonna, is, yeah, uh, um, I can have, I wanna make sure you're okay with timeline, I can have Brenda reach out to each of you tomorrow. Um, if you're, happen to be away the first week of August, you could zoom in. From a camper, from an island, from a tent, wherever I think could be beneficial. Um, because then you can ask questions. Um, and then we move forward from there.
Good. So we'll look for that message from Brenda to plan forward. There you go, Andrea. Well, we're down to agenda item ten, which is present to speak, if you're in the room and you'd like to share something, you can raise your hand, if you're online, you can raise that virtual hand up. Okay, hi Jamie. Let's see, okay, there you go.
Hi there. Um, this, um, Jamie Coprak seventy-nine Common Road. Um, I'm speaking here again tonight because I feel like I'm exhausting every reasonable avenue for resolution with the superintendent. And many of the concerns I've raised continue to go unanswered, um, despite several detailed emails and speaking at these very meetings. Um, I'm here tonight to ask for the board's support and getting clear, direct answers from Phil to the questions I've raised to him, because up to this point, um, there's just deflection. Um, I wanna be clear, I genuinely appreciate many of the things that Mr. Stevens has done for our town's children over the years. Outside of this situation, I believe you're the good person who cares about kids. But this experience and this ongoing failure to respond and take accountability to protect students and provide answers has been deeply disappointing and emotionally exhausting for our family. Um, on June twenty-second, I submitted a thorough email to Mr. Stevens outlining serious and specific concerns that still remain ignored. FERPA violations, falsified behavior referrals, safety plan breaches and multiple violations of Board of Education policy. I followed up again today, July eighth, after still receiving no reply. When I finally did get a response, it failed to address nearly every issue I raised and offered no documentation or evidence to support the claim that no violations occurred, just a simple statement of, we believe a FERPA violation did not occur. I'm repeatedly told there's no evidence that the referrals were false, yet there is either a continued refusal or an inability to provide the very documentation that would validate those referrals as written. We are now ninety-six days past my initial request, which is well beyond the forty-five day FERPA window. So either the behavior sheets exist and are not being provided, which is a FERPA violation. Or they don't exist at all, which confirms that our child's I E P was not being followed, this question still remains unanswered. To reiterate, the superintendent has either refused or is unable to provide any proof that the referrals we are questioning that are still in our child's record are factual, even after I've submitted timestamped documentation and behavior sheets that directly contradict them. The updated spreadsheet he referenced still includes those referrals despite clear inconsistencies, delayed entries, some filed days later at night. That is not transparency, that is avoidance. Let me be clear, multiple board policies have been violated, including those on student privacy, staff ethics, mandated reporting and the implementation of I E Ps and safety plans. I outlined each of these in my June twenty-second email, and yet not only has Mr. Stevens failed to respond. He recently asked me what documentation I'm missing, even though I clearly listed each of the missing dates in my email. At a certain point, this stops being oversight or disorganization and starts to look like weaponized incompetence. A deliberate strategy to delay accountability by pretending not to understand or engage with information that has already been clearly provided. Mr. Stevens has made it clear, both in writing and through inaction, that staffing needs take precedence over a child's active safety plan, I E P and mental and emotional well-being. That is unacceptable and it directly contradicts everything this district claims to stand for. The superintendent claims that changes are being made to improve, to improve the referral process. I also appreciate the boards being, the board being attentive to this, however, progress doesn't fix what's already happened. It doesn't remove the false referrals in my child's record, it doesn't erase the safety plan violations. And it doesn't undo the fact that our child's confidential educational record was shared with someone outside of the school system. And let's not forget, I wouldn't even know any of this happened if I had not requested my child's records, this is unacceptable. According to board policy, personally identifiable information includes any information that would allow a reasonable person in the community to identify a student. According to Student Privacy Office under the Department of Education. Personally identifiable information for education records is a FERPA term referring to identifiable information that is maintained in education records. And includes indirect identifiers such as other information, which can be used to distinguish or trace an individual's identity, either directly or indirectly through linkages with other information. That is exactly what happened. Details found within my son's educational record were shared by a staff member outside of the school with no educational interest and without parental consent. Mr. Stevens insists that he and the board attorney believe no FERPA violation occurred despite both federal law and your own board policy clearly defining what constitutes a violation. And to date, he still hasn't provided the one thing I've repeatedly asked for. A written explanation of how this does not meet the legal or policy definition of a violation. If there is language that stasis wasn't a violation, I'm simply asking to see it. This is a very serious situation, it requires more than vague, we feel statements. It requires a clear documented explanation and legal citations. I have taken every appropriate step and waited for meaningful responses. But when staff are permitted to make harmful claims with no obligation to prove them and families are denied access to rec- uh, records that would clarify the truth. This becomes a serious issue of accountability and transparency. So I'm asking the board, what is your role when a superintendent refuses to enforce your policies or respond honestly and completely to completely to apparent fighting for fairness and truth in their child's education and records? And what is your stance on staffing needs coming before a child's well-being and more importantly, their right to a free and appropriate public education? Make no mistake, I still expect a full written response to my original email, point by point. But there won't be another meeting for a month, and this has gone on far too long with vague answers that ignore my concerns and avoid accountability. My advocacy will continue until appropriate safeguards are in place and my children's records are accurate and reflect the truth. This dismissive behavior is not just disappointing, it's disgraceful. I want to end by saying this, to reiterate, I don't believe Mr. Stevens is a bad person. We've appreciated much of what he's done for our children over this, the years. But this is a very bad situation, one that has been handled very poorly, and the longer it goes unaddressed, the more damaging it becomes. What's most troubling is we've never even received a basic apology for what's happened to our child. I'm not asking for perfection, but I'm asking for answers, accountability and decency, thank you.
Thank you, Jamie. And thanks for being present at our policy committee meetings, so that, um, we're there to see what we're working on and, um, your feedback, of course, helps us drive those decisions, so thank you. Uh, is there anybody else on line?
Um. Uh, yeah, I'm, uh, Rachel Fox out of Common Road. So. I am. Not sure if these are the official results. But they did just release results that. There were nine, six hundred and nine, yes, four hundred and ninety-three now.
Thank you, we have a question.
So as of now. Those are what's being assumed as the unofficial results, there may still be some travelers, there might be to be a recount, but to the best of my knowledge, that is what upstairs has.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, before I comment.
Um, I have a comment, I just wanted to say thank you publicly on my behalf as part of the board to Detroit and other works for all of the, uh, help that they are giving us for everything, all the time, ever.
All of that.
I wish we could give them another name, we don't have.
Pizza.
Local.
Yes.
That's kinda what I was gonna say too, especially regarding the field maintenance and the drainage at Center and the Cross Country Trail, which is amazing. And thanks to the Wellington Fire Department for helping with watering our fields too, that's really great, way to go, community.
Yes, man, um, I would like to thank all of our, our teachers who are moving on in their careers through Emily and Victor and Stacy. And thank them for their wonderful service in Williston and what is in them luck in their future endeavors.
Sam and good.
Um. Thunder.
Thunder on.
Eastern. I'm good for right now.
Okay. Alright.
Alright, so normally this is a big preamble, but I am angry, so there is no preamble. I'm the six twenty-three, twenty twenty-five Board of Finance meeting chair at C I P, James Marshall decided to call me and my fellow Republican Board of Ed members, Pope, for not supporting the Board of Ed budget. You speak to the Board of Finance members about not supporting the budget, and then at four minutes and twenty-three seconds of YouTube video, he says, quote, and that goes as well for the Board of Ed members, the Republican Board of Ed members. That's Arthur Christiansen, John Mitchell and Sam Sperry. You guys are elected representatives of the Board of Ed, you should be advocating for the families and students in town. I haven't seen any of that, in fact, I've seen the opposite. You guys are not here to be politicians, you are here to support the community that you serve, end quote, in four minutes and fifty seconds. First, I find it funny that in the same meeting at two minutes and twenty-six seconds, he talks about politicking with the Board of Finance. At three minutes, he talks about partisan nonsense and posturing. And in three minutes and thirty-eight seconds, he mentions hyper partisan crap, less than one minute later, he proceeds to only call out the Republican Board of Finance, well, excuse me, Board of Education members. For lack of support of our budget, with no evidence to back that up. That to me is the very definition of partisan nonsense and posturing, and since Mr. Marshall needs some evidence, my support of this budget, want me to provide some. I've attended every board meeting, Board of Education meeting for the budget, and I voted in favor of every board budget that's been put forward. I attended the four twenty-seven Board of Finance meeting, which was the initial presentation of the Board of Education budget. I attended that meeting in person, however, I was twenty-eight minutes late. I attended the four-two Board of Finance meeting in person, even though there was no real talk about the Board of Education. I attended the four-three Board of Finance meeting in person, a four-hour and thirty-eight-minute meeting where I stayed for the entire meeting. As well as, via some unfortunate circumstances, served as the point person for the Board of Finance questions while also advocating for the K budget as well as the Region nineteen budget. I attended the five fifteen Board of Finance meeting in person, a three-hour and seven-minute meeting. I attended the five twenty-two Board of Finance meeting in person, a three-hour and twelve-minute meeting. Where I had public, a very public and a pleasant exchange about reductions with first electmen and after. I attended the five twenty-nine Board of Finance meeting online, the six eighteen Board of Finance meeting in person. And finally, I attended the same six twenty-three Board of Finance meeting where I was hauled out, I attended that meeting online, albeit a little bit late. Now, those are things you can easily see, Mr. Marshall, so let's talk briefly about the things that you can't and quite frankly, don't need to see. Once the first referendum failed, I immediately emailed Phil and Brianna my ideas of how much we could stand to reduce without losing anything that would impact the students and where that money could come from. After the second referendum failed, I spoke with Brianna about trying to find areas that we could take money from that would not result in anyone losing their jobs. And most recently, I spearheaded the effort of the Board of Education to be at the transfer station this past holiday weekend to speak to people and advocate for a budget there. I attended both days, standing with Brianna on Saturday and Phil on Sunday. With all that said, please allow me to express my deepest and sincerest apologies to Mr. Marshall. All of my efforts, just listen, do not meet his idea of proper support for the Board of Education budget. As a side note to whoever's recording these minutes, should be noted that the previous sentence was spoken with as much sarcasm as I could possibly muster in this moment. In closing, let me just say, I don't like listening to things that I've done because I don't do them for credit. I do them because it's the right thing to do and I'm here to do the right thing. The same reason I volunteer at center as much as I can, from field trips to holiday shop to field day. Advocate for the populace that does not have, yet have the ability to advocate for themselves. But when someone makes a false accusation that I don't advocate for the kids in this town, as you can see, I get a wee bit angry. To Mr. Marshall, I'm gonna steal one of your favorite words because your accusations against me are complete garbage, thank you.
Alright. Uh. I'm sort of, I'll let up by saying that, um, I believe that everyone on this board works together and well and cares for the students in this town, that's why we're here. And, um, I take great pride in that, and I appreciate working with each one of you. I do feel like we sit at this table as equals, um, caring as much as we all do and putting in as much time and effort as we do, so, um. You can. Wear different hats in your life, we can disagree on some things, but I, I do think that here, um, we're a group that works well together and supports our group together, so. Thank you all for that. Alright, we're ready to entertain a motion for adjournment at nine oh eight.
Motion to adjourn.
John, second. I'm in favor of agreeing on this.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, alright, we're adjourning at nine oh eight.